Attention, please, welcome to the zoning board meeting September 12, 2023. My name is Marty Aitken, I'm the chairman. So Vice Chairman, Mr. Ray Dell. I got Bullman, Mr. Himmel, Mr. Chin, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Frankel, our clerk, Mrs. Noonan, and the Director, Mr. Cohn. If you have a cellphone or pager, could you please put it on silent or vibrate? Not to interrupt the meeting. If you want to speak to your friends, please go outside. Stop the hearing here as it is. One thing I want to say is, we're going to bring up something at the beginning of this meeting about some charges to this board. And one of them that I read has to do with me and my mistakes. Somewhere between COVID and coming back to here, I never approved the past minutes readings, which we should have done. I should have done that. And that's my mistake as the chairman of this board. I'll take full responsibility for that, and I apologize to the public for that. Right now, if I could, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the previous minutes in a proven place. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Mr. Chin, could we please give everyone a note that's going to speak? If anyone's going to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. If you plan on speaking at all, please take a note, or you won't be able to speak.
Do you spread out the truth, the whole truth, and not give up the truth in the matter of now hearing? Yes, you did. Thank you.
And I have Director, Mr. Cohn, would like to address the zoning board. Mr. Director?
Members, regarding the reconsideration request for the ZBA case 2357, 72 South Bayfield. Dear Board Members, after further review of the above referenced zoning board case, I have discovered that the owner omitted information in the zoning board application concerning a prior zoning board decision. A list of all prior zoning board cases is required for all zoning board applications. The immediate case in question, case number 2017, June 30th, 2020, allowed the construction of a 12 by 20 foot shed along the left side property lot. The owner never recorded this decision with the Jibriti Street deeds and went ahead and constructed the shed without obtaining a building permit. No instructions have been performed, and the location of the shed is in question. Additionally, there are other building and zoning code issues and violations of the property, specifically a large pergola that has been constructed in the rear yard without a building permit. No instructions have been performed to verify the wind loading resistance of the foundation. The board did not have the benefit of this newly obtained information listed above while considering the decision of the most recent case, ZBA 2356, at the public hearing held August 22nd. Therefore, I recommend that the board reconsider its decision, case ZBA 2356, in order to also consider this new information listed above, and that a new public hearing be scheduled to properly facilitate this battle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. I wasn't at that meeting, so if anyone wants to, that was at that meeting and voted, wants to make a motion to reconsider, I will take it. If not, I can't make that motion. Anyone voted yea?
Make a motion to reconsider ZBA 2357, and a positive vote, David. 72 Bayfield, three.
Motion is the second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I raise your hands, please? All in favor? Posed?
Nay.
Nay. Four to one passes. All right, that will be done, shall be noted. Further on the tonight's agenda, we have the city solicitor on an open meeting law complaint. That's what I was talking about earlier. You would like to speak, City Solicitor? Thank you, Mr. Timmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. I sent out a memo enclosing the violation issues, and the proper procedure when you have an open meeting law issue is that you hear the allegations, you address them, and then at the conclusion of that, I would ask you to make a motion to appoint me to respond formally on behalf of the board, and then I will do so based on the discussion tonight. But does everyone have in front of them the violations that are complained of? I was thinking I'd just go through them sequentially. This can be pretty quick, because there are some particular issues that were complained about. They don't go into the substance categories, more procedure. And the first one is that there were no time stamped open meeting law certificates on file in the city clerk's office. And all that means is, all appointed officials, all board members, were supposed to do a review under the state ethics law of how the state ethics law governs your behavior. And then you were supposed to sign a certificate regarding the open meeting law materials and file them on the city clerk. Now, what I regret is, the timing on this was such, that you recall, we met back in February, when you had your organizational meeting, where we went over a lot of these issues. Because this is in all volunteer army, I don't say, I know we have one lawyer, and I think, I beg your pardon, yeah, we have two lawyers on the board, and, you know, they're not municipal law attorneys, so there are some areas here we would not be familiar at all, and I regret that some of this fell into those areas. But I understand, and I confirm with the city clerk, that she's in receipt of signed open meeting law certificates. Have each of you done this with the city clerk?
I think I have.
You haven't yet?
I don't think.
Okay. Well, she said there was one, no, you did.
Okay.
You did. There was one missing at the time, but when I checked here, I went over it, and it seemed we had all of you, so maybe we don't have the chairman, actually.
That's correct.
You have it. Perfect.
He stood in last week.
All right. So that violation is cured, but what I will do is acknowledge that it occurred, and then I'll explain some of the efforts we've had to inform you on the various issues that are in this program. The second violation relates to approval of minutes, and that is an important matter, an important issue. One thing that mitigates against the failure to approve is the fact that due to the efforts of the gentleman to our left, all these meetings are streamed, they're online, they're available, so people can find out what happened. But still, you're under an obligation to generate minutes, approve them, and then post them on the website. And that's a pretty ministerial thing. It's one of those practices that once you establish it, it should be easy, and Mrs. Noonan is adept very readily to the position here, so. It's my understanding from what you said earlier, this has been corrected, Mr. Chairman?
All set.
Great.
It was brought to my attention, I don't even know how I missed that, I really don't, but it was, it was from COVID, and when I have my stuff, I write out every time, and we just copy it and move on.
It understood. I mean, it's an important matter, and I don't want to minimize the fact that we didn't do it, and I won't when we report in, but it's corrected, and that's what's important. The third one is a little troubling, but I understand that it may be based on misinformation. The third issue is that there was a discussion regarding the cancellation of the August 8th meeting, and that it didn't occur in the public view. And I don't know who would clarify how the decision was made. If Mrs. Noonan cares, I don't know, you've had a public speaking role before, but...
I think what happened is, what I was told, there was nothing on the docket for that meeting, that filing, and the clerk called me and said, well, cancel the 28th meeting because there was nothing on the docket. Here.
Yeah, there was, there was nothing, and it was just based on, if we were going to extend a case, if I remember correctly, that meeting, yeah, it was, I could not be there. It wasn't going to be. You weren't going to be there, and we didn't know if our applicant would be there as well, so that was the decision that was, we had talked about publicly, like we were, the meeting had not adjourned yet, so. So there was a discussion prior to the meeting beginning, so it was more of a, it was more of both, and the fact there was nothing on the docket, and that it was, obviously, we were down to potentially four without an unknown fifth, and we had, so if we were going to extend anybody past that date, it was go to the second date, not August.
Instead of August.
Yeah, instead of, instead of...
It would have been three.
Yeah, instead of, instead of putting somebody on and then having nobody be there. If I remember correctly. So, sorry.
Any other members with comments? That's what was explained to me, I confirmed it with Mr. Cohnland. You know, there's a screening process to get ready, and nothing was ready for the agenda. So that being the case, there's no affirmative obligation, although you plan to be available and meet on August 8th, if there's nothing on the agenda and no reason to meet, there was no affirmative obligation to establish a meeting, so nothing was advertised, nothing occurred, so I'll, I'll inform the complainant directly on this issue, but I'll also make sure that it's clear when you make the report to the Attorney General's Office what occurred.
And we'll also make sure that if that occurs again, that we'll do it probably, it was just, it was just more so that there wasn't a meeting, we knew people who were going to be out.
Right, that, it's rare that that would happen.
Super rare. It was probably the first time I've seen it in my 10 years.
Right, right. And you got, you're getting called on it. Okay. And then the final one is in relation to something that, that appears to have happened while the body was together, and there's heightened sensitivity when a quorum of you is together in one place, that you may talk about something, and that's considered to be a deliberation. So once three of you are in the same room, there's danger for, as far as your ethical obligation. So can someone explain what went on on the 25th of July, when it's alleged that prior to the meeting, there was some discussion with a, I think, an applicant about whether closets were going to be present or whatever?
Correct. We're sitting right here, and the client was right there, and I says, you said you don't have, just before the meeting started, people were right here, I asked, so we didn't know what we're discussing the case. I says, you have closets downstairs, but you say there's no bedrooms down there. She goes, no, those closets were never supposed to be in the drawing. I said, okay, guys, the closets aren't in the drawing. That's all that was said. Then we went into the meeting, when they came, and says, as she said, there's not, there's no closets down there, so they weren't bedrooms. And that's all that was, it was, everyone was here, we said it in front of people, but the meeting didn't open yet. We were just about to open, and I says, you know, just so you know, you're first on the agenda, I see a bunch of closets down there, just to get the number of bedrooms right, so we all got the same discussion, it was nothing about sneaky, there was no sneakiness, it was in front of everybody, and I said, are these closets in the plans, are they supposed to be here? Because those are bedroom closets. You say there's no bedrooms in the basement. She goes, no, they're not in there, they told me, don't put them in there, but somehow they're still in the plans. She goes, take them out. That was it. As innocent as can be.
The issue that we had is, we hadn't opened the meeting.
That was the issue, I guess, which whoever's complaining...
So in the future, we'll make sure that if we have an open discussions, we get meetings open, we understand what we did. It wasn't, it wasn't planned that way.
And it was in front of everybody, no one talked secretly, there was no secrets about no closets.
We weren't requesting it to be removed prior to, we just asked, but it's a general question.
Is there, are you having closets in your basements? Because we're looking at the first, first set of plans right here, just before, we're just waiting for everyone to set up.
Well, I understand, you just have to be sensitive about the fact, whether the meeting's open or not is not the issue, it's whether there's a quorum present, and you're talking about something. That's the problem, but, but I...
I got it, when I read that, but there was no, there was no malice at all, like anyone in this board.
I don't think anyone's ever accused you of having malice.
Oh, I understand, we understand, we understand where we, we thought that it was...
They have failings.
Right, and, and the fact that it was, it was brought up again, I mean, the concern is that, that you could, you could whisper to somebody, hey, is that widow's walk staying on the plans? And the person goes, yeah, and, you know, so that can be a problem. But I, I understand what happened in this particular instance, and I said that at the outset here, it seemed that the substantive facts were, were not as, you know...
Multuous.
I won't say concerning, because they're concerning, but not as offensive as they might have otherwise been.
No, I think that, that, that specification, if I, you know, can, it was strictly to the, to the applicant, in front of everyone, and we did have, we did have quorum, we just had to call this, we had to call the meeting to agenda, we had, we had...
And then when you called the meeting to discuss the issue...
We asked, we asked again at that meeting, so are the, they removed, and they, yeah, specifically college that they were...
It had nothing to do with anything but the information.
All right, understood. So if it's agreeable, I'm, I'm aware of where we're coming from and all this, and I think I can prepare a proper response as far as your obligation to respond to the complaint, and then I'll send something to the complainant directly. Pardon me?
We're going to appoint you to...
Yes, if you make a motion, appoint me to respond on behalf of the board.
Yeah, could you please?
Yeah, I make a motion for Solicitor Timmons to respond on behalf of the board to the complaints as of, from meeting date of June 26th, 23rd, 25th.
On the, on the motion, none, all in favor? Aye. Posed, so moved.
I, and if I could just comment on that motion to reconsider, I think the next step should be that, I, I hope you don't take any action on that matter tonight.
We're not.
Okay.
We're going to set another day.
Yeah, we should notify all interested parties, what's going on, and reschedule, okay.
Schedule a month from now, so.
Very good, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you all, sorry about the...
Thank you, Mr. Timmons.
See a light across?
Yeah, you know. Yeah, he's actually there. Frankel sitting in, Mr. Chin is leaving. Thank you, Mr. Chin. One second, one second, before we do anything. On Liberty Street, you were in Liberty Street, which we're going to do now.
Yeah, can you sit for a minute?
You were in Liberty Street, you were in Liberty Street. Mr. Himmel, you were there. Is that what? You were, Mr. Frankel, so let's, let's go back to that one more, we have one more to do. And what I'm going to, what I'm going to ask the applicants, I watched it on TV because I was sick, I understand the whole, the whole case, understand why, why they did that, I would like to sit on that as well.
Yeah.
Any, okay. That'll, that'll be included, and Jerry can go sit on it as well. And Councilor Yarup, come to old business.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you again for your service, not always easy, I know. Last time we were here, the board had some concerns with the, the traffic flow, and suggested that I attend a, a traffic study, which we were able to do. We retained Jack Gillan to conduct a traffic study, and we took also a new, fresh look at how the traffic would flow in terms of the parking on the site, because the site is on the corner, and, and there's actually an egress on Water Street that was referenced that was not part of the site at the time. Someone, one of the board members had suggested maybe utilizing that egress in obtaining a permanent easement for the use of that egress, which we have, Mr. Fairley is here, we've spoken to him, he's actually approved a, a permanent easement, and that could be a condition should the board consider this favorable, so that the entrance would actually be on Liberty Street, and the exit would be on Water Street, and that would allow for a much smoother traffic flow, would allow for the parking to be not quite as, as difficult to maneuver in and out of, and according to the traffic plan, in any event, it would not even delay traffic for a second at the peak hours in the morning or evening rush hour. These dispensaries aren't really jam packed with, with cars at any point in time, but nonetheless, with BJ's gas station there, I can understand the board's concern, plus the constraints of the actual site itself. I think the suggestions were all good, and actually, I believe that it came up with a better, a better site plan in terms of the entry and exiting of the vehicles. So you have in front of you the, the site plan with the parking plan, 10 parking spaces, entering, we would be closing a curb cut on Liberty Street, which is approximately in the middle of the, of the site currently. The other curb cut at the end of the site towards the self-storage building would remain open. Cars would enter in that curb cut, park, and then exit, continue on in that one, one-way direction out onto Water Street. Now, Water Street, the light at Water Street is, is a little close, but that light is not historically a light as depicted in the, the traffic plan to back up in, in any shape or manner. In other words, nobody stays at that light more than one cycle, even at peak hours in the morning or in the evening hours. So maneuvering out of that site, the number of cars that would be maneuvering out of that site would not in any way impact that intersection. The most that would ever occur, would seem to me, would be that the, the light cycle would change, somebody exiting the site might have to wait until the light cycle changed, and then maneuver out safely, but certainly, it's not going to cause any type of traffic backup or delay for, for any, anybody on the streets already.
I've been driving around in these different places, and sitting there, probably like a freak, people digging a weirdo if they're drunk, watching people going in and out of these places, like I'm going to rob them or something, I don't know, but really, there's not a lot of traffic at these places, and I'm wondering why. Is there that many people that have medical life? I mean, I just don't...
It's not happening.
I know it's not medical, that's the reason.
The sales, the sales overall...
I went to the ones that aren't medical, that, that they're not busy, and I talked to some of the people going in there, and they're getting better deals everywhere. I mean, how many of these can, can, can the business itself...
Well, it's like any business, location, 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 and where, where it is in relation to other dispensaries, so in Quincy, there's room for a number of more dispensaries according to the state law, however, the one at the...
Yeah, and this... There's not many cars at these places that I thought was going to be a lot, I really did.
And I know Attorney Silverman has better knowledge on, on dispensaries generally, and what the, you know, what the trend is in terms of...
And I'm talking to them, and they're talking about that they give a lot of discounts now, that, and if you're a patron there, you get a percentage of your money, so you get discounts the next time you come in, so. They're all fighting for this business, they're all fighting for it. I mean, personally, do I see that as a place that's good or bad? Parking isn't, to me, isn't a problem, and the traffic isn't a problem, because it's always from Liberty Street coming up to the gas station is the problem, right there, and if someone sees that it's all backed up anywhere when they're driving down, they just go buy, they just go buy them to get cash, or nickel more, you get it somewhere else.
It's difficult sometimes to get into BJ's at the peak hours, but getting into this place, you know, you don't really hope.
But was this study, my, my original question I wanted, was this study done with the new exit? Or was it done before the new exit, to Water Street?
No, it was done in anticipation of the new exit. It has a little different configuration in terms of the parking, we reduced the number of parking spaces, because it was just too tight, and you just don't need that many parking spaces in dispensaries. So we gave more room in terms of the traffic flow, made it a little bit safer in the parking lot, and gave up the parking spaces. So the, but the traffic study itself was done in anticipation of entering on Liberty and then exiting on Water Street.
Any questions?
I mean, to the, to the chairman's point, I drove by it a number of different times over the last few days, just to kind of gauge it myself, I, I saw more impact probably from vehicles on the lot rather than vehicles entering the lot. I do appreciate you guys taking the opportunity to find alternative uses for exits, because I think that may alleviate some challenges in terms of trying to come out of there if somebody was to take a left, you know? Because I think coming out of that Liberty Street exit to try and take a left, there, but the few times that I did drive by, there was, you know, some traffic at the light, but if not, nothing, nothing formidable, you know? I think that the, the one thing that we often get caught up in, as we do as people, is, you know, peak hours have a tendency to amplify our perception of a situation. And, and from what I know of consumers of this product, there is very little, they don't want to be at peak hours as well. So I think that in non-peak hours, you will have no problem at all, and, and at peak hours, I don't feel like it'll amplify the situation at all.
Any questions?
No, I like the fact that they're going to have an easement onto Mr. Feeny's other property, and would that be a right-hand only turn there, or...
We didn't anticipate a right-hand turn only, although I would think that most vehicles that were going to be going, exiting, would be going right if they were entering, entering from Liberty Street. On the other hand, even going left-hand on that location, I don't think would really create an issue, particularly with the lights there, would actually allow for an easier flow to go left, but I'll leave that up to the board to consider. I mean, if it's necessary, it's necessary, but I, I don't see how it necessarily helps, but nonetheless, we're, we're open to that if it...
Yeah, you can get back on the highway right there, just take a quick one.
I'd be happy if it was a right, but please...
I did read the traffic report, and I went down there last Friday night, and I got gas, I peed, I was at the site, and I, I think it's a good idea to have the easement, I think it does alleviate, having one way through the parking lot does help, so my other questions, yeah, go on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak?
I have a few questions and comments.
Come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'd like to ask...
Name an address, please. Name an address.
Name an address.
My name, Pomohide Yasada, and the 74 Pleasant Street.
Okay.
Okay. Is your client...
You can ask through us, and we'll, we'll, we'll ask.
You ask, go.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is the applicant going to allow their customers to consume marijuana on their premises?
So I, I tell you, you weren't here for the previous meeting, but that was, that was, that was specifically addressed by us as the board, that there was no consumption on site, and, you know, they, that there is no ability for us, I mean, you still allow to utilize on public streets, but there was no ability to consume on site.
I have another question. I'd like to make sure that everybody knows here that consuming marijuana in public is illegal in Massachusetts, right? And I'd like to know whether the Quincy Police are committed to enforcing this law?
Where, where is zoning board? You'd have to call them and ask them if they're committed. I, I don't deal with criminal stuff here.
Yeah, we don't, we don't.
I don't, I don't write tickets for smoking marijuana in the city.
So it means that the board members are not sure about...
No, 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 that's a police question. It's not a zoning board question, that's all I'm saying to you.
Okay, so when we approve, we get... Okay, so it means that your answer made it clear, at least to me, that the Quincy Police, you are not sure that...
No, that's not true. That's not what, you, you're putting words in my mouth. I said, you have to ask the Quincy Police, do not ask us that. I don't know what they committed to. That's their pledge and their honor.
Okay, so in this case, let me, let me paraphrase.
Another question? You have any other questions?
Actually, I don't have a question. No, then, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Denise...
Name an address for the record.
I'm sorry?
Name an address for the record.
Dr. Denise Valenti, I have two address, business and one home. The home is 62 Forest Avenue, which happens to be the closest community to the medicinal facility, Quincy, Mass. All right. And 1372, I have a bioscience company located downtown Quincy, that's important to this because we only study... to this because we only study marijuana impairment and driving.
Thank you.
It is my opinion, having grown up in Oregon, it doesn't matter if you're pro-marijuana or you're against marijuana. We all have to really work in partnership to have safe roads and safe consumption of marijuana. I think this particular business is a unique opportunity to have Quincy as an example of how things should be done and make our roads safer. I gave you some information about the intersection with a stoplight. Cannabis-impaired driving is a thing. It is real. There are deaths because of it. A cannabis user drives twenty-four-seven. There's such a thing as wake-and-bake, where they use cannabis before they go to work. Many of those people have killed innocent. I think this particular shop has some benefits for Quincy. There are a variety of people that will be against it and a variety of people for it. But I do think an opportunity was missed here for a more comprehensive study. Traffic studies don't mean just counting the traffic that goes through it. It's what can be done at that particular community level, street level, intersection level, to make it safer. My research shows that cannabis users have dead spots in their vision. I gave you some information. Feel free to pass it back. That means they can't see stoplights frequently when they've just consumed. The configuration of that stoplight at that intersection, part of it has already got the remedy. Stoplight here, stoplight here. I think the rest of that intersection should be reviewed and configured to account for marijuana-impaired drivers. It's naive, it's foolish, and it's irresponsible to assume that those people going to that dispensary, a percentage of them are not going to be driving high. There is going to be a percentage that present high and leave high, and we need to protect our community. And I think a better, more comprehensive traffic study that addresses cannabis specifically should be done, and the city should support this dispensary in their actions to make sure that intersection and the one above and below are made as safe as possible.
Thank you, doctor.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Matthew Lyons, one-seventy-five Center Street, Quincy, Mass. I'm a candidate for Ward Four City Council. So I've been knocking on the doors in these neighborhoods, down Penn Street, Water Street, down Granite Street, down the back, and there's multiple concerns from the residents that I've talked to. For the most part, I don't really hear a lot of people that are saying that they're opposed to having recreational marijuana dispensaries around. Problem they have is these, the zoning boards, not the zoning boards, but the zoning laws, where they have to have fifteen hundred feet from a school and five hundred feet from recreation. It seems that, and if you look at it, there are, this is the third one going in the city. There's one on Rashudy Drive, West Quincy. There's one on, at the base of the Ford River Bridge, which is Quincy Point. This one, which is in South Quincy. There's another one being looked at, Brook Road, which is literally a stone's throw from these gentlemen's where they want to put it in, which is South Quincy. And then another one at Quincy Ave., which is Quincy Point. I think the problem and the perception of a lot of this is, is that why are they all being dumped west, South Quincy, and Quincy Point? Why don't the good people in Squanum, Marymount, and every other neighborhood have the opportunity to have their weed so they don't have to drive down to West Quincy to get it? So the attorney tells us that these stores are nothing more than a liquor store? Well, then, these laws should reflect that. And if they are, then the good people of Quincy and all these other neighborhoods can get their weed stores right where they live, and they don't have to come into our neighborhood to get them, whether it's because of the driving, or the traffic, or anything else. But it seems to me, when I talk to a lot of people in the residents, the residents in West and South Quincy, is that they have the feeling that whether it's overdevelopment or if it's marijuana stores or a lot of other things, they seem to be the dumping grounds for this stuff. So I think before any license is given out, these zoning laws for where they're going to be put, if they're no different than a liquor store, then by all means, they should be allowed in every other neighborhood in the city, and we should spread it out. We shouldn't have them all going in there. If we're looking at five dispensaries going into the city, spread them out. There's no reason to have them all in the same neighborhood. I haven't seen the traffic report, but to just summarily dismiss this and say that putting an easement out on to Water Street, and it's going to be no problem, seems a little naive to me. I live in the neighborhood. I've been in the neighborhood very, a lot lately. There's a lot of people on Penn Street. They may not be here tonight, but every single one of them has a problem with that gas station. We, and I'm not sure, I don't live in Quincy Point, so I don't know what the traffic looks like in the recreational store down there. But I work in the city, and I've worked in the city of Boston for thirty-six years. There's multiple places around there. There's one on Freeport Street, right near the one oh three, and that's jam-packed, a lot. There's other ones that are, maybe some of them have better deals than others, and they get better businesses, but, you know, we're not getting into the context and nuance of that either. So it just seems to me that in Ward Four, they, people in those, these neighborhoods are looking at two, two recreational dispensaries within, I'm not sure the distance, but one-fifty-nine Brook Road, Brook Road, and fifteen Liberty Street. If you look at a map, they're right next to each other. There's no need of it. So if you're going to be fair, the people that want to put in for an applicant for the Brook Road, they should be able to compete with this gentleman. And that's, you know, again, I don't hear a lot of talk that people are against having recreational dispensaries. It just seems, and it's a new industry, these are things that are going to be there for a long time. And if they're no different than a liquor store, then treat them like a liquor store. Let them put them in in other locations. So that's just all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Anyone else? Please come on.
My name is Brian Backman. I live at one-hundred Pleasant Street, right on the corner of Water and Pleasant. To say that traffic is not an issue in that area, I think is a little bit short-sighted. All due respect to studies that have been done. I have lived at that residence since two thousand and four. A lot of accidents have happened in that area. We've done a lot in the city to help with by starting with stop signs and then flashing five-way stop signs to the light system we have now, which has greatly helped reduce the traffic accidents there. It does cause backups, right, during rush hours, right? We're talking peak hours of business, but also rush hour, right? People going to work and coming from work, and after school as well. I do hear that, you know, we're treating these as they are liquor stores, and I know there's liquor stores in that area, in and around the schools. I'm very active in our community with children. I don't, we have a dog park right across the way there. Again, forgive me for my naivety and negligence, not being on top of this until it's gotten to this point, but I really strongly can't believe we've gotten this far at this point, especially in the neighborhood there, where we already have a very good neighbor, the current resident on Liberty Street. Very good to everybody in the area, you know, works on your car, doesn't abuse like overcharge. You need to borrow a tool because you're doing something, happy to help out with the, you know, you don't see that anymore, right? We're in a city, right? We're in a city situation, but you still have some of that old-school, "Hey, man, I got a flat tire in my driveway, can I borrow your jack for a minute?" Like mentality that you don't get from your big, national-type businesses, or in this case, like a liquor store, or a, in this case, a dispensary. And again, as already stated, we have multiple going in to the area in the city already, and we have one, two, trying to go in, like, within a stone's throw of each other, both extremely close to school districts. There's three schools in that one vicinity right there. Me personally, as a taxpayer and as somebody that has lived there for a long time, this is not something that I think is good for the city or our diva hood. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's done.
For what message? Change done, one-sixty-seven Pavcock Street, Quincy. I thank you, with the, people feel to understand us that this zoning board takes each application individually. So Brook Road, going to put in an application, has nothing to do with this gentleman's request. Brook Road will be dealt with by this board members in the professional way you handle yourselves when the time comes. Another thing I'd like to speak of is Mr. Feely. He's in the neighborhood all the time, you'll see him walking his husky. He's been a good neighbor. He has a chance, he has a new tenant going to propose him to come in. It's going to clean that corner up, rather than looking at cars jacked up and cars everywhere. I think it'll be a much better look for the city, and, like I said, Mr. Feely has been a great member of the community for a number of years. Feely's baked enamel. As a matter of fact, I did work for him and his brother, and I took the gas tanks out of that station probably twenty-five years ago for his brother. And I just think some consideration should be given to that. It's going to beautify that, not beautify, we're not talking Natasha Mahal, but it's going to clean up that corner and make Quincy more presentable. And I hope I don't offend anybody, there's going to be change in Quincy, and this board has pretty much always been for good change. There's always going to be change, and people have to accept it. Quincy stood still for so long, and that's it. There's going to be change. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I was going to say something, but...
You can't. No, you can't. This is your topic, John. Name it here, Stacey, right?
I'm only rebutting. If no one else had spoke, I would not have spoken, but since other people spoke from listening and speak, my name's John Orderfield, I'm from sixty-two Grand Mall Road. I've had a medical marijuana license for almost ten years now, three different states. I don't consider a marijuana establishment like a liquor store at all. That's an insult, okay? A liquor store is way worse than a marijuana store, okay? So let's get that straight, okay? I don't have any blind spots, I'm not sure what the person was talking about before. When I take my glasses off, I am blind, okay? I'm glad to, I'm six-one, seven-four, seven feet four... Okay? Say your tax.
I'll see this.
Okay, thank you very much.
... sponsored research.
Ten a.m. tomorrow, I'll give you a call. If you don't answer, I'll call you back at four-twenty. It's my turn to testify.
This was funny. Go ahead, John.
Marijuana does, you know, affect your memory, so I got to get back on topic here. One thing I want to say is the Quincy Police do an excellent job in Quincy, enforcing the marijuana laws, enforcing the driving laws, so we don't have to worry about the Quincy Police. One of the reasons all the marijuana places are opening up towards the Braintree, Waymouth lines is because Braintree and Waymouth, they don't sell marijuana in those cities. So the people who are operating these places want the people, the customers from Braintree and Waymouth to come here, just like Mr. Keckel wants the people from Braintree and Waymouth to come to Elvis. So when the people from Braintree and Waymouths come here, who gets that three percent? City of Quincy. So that's a positive, okay? They have marijuana in Boston, so the people in Squanum, they could drive to Boston. I would say the people in Squanum probably get it delivered to them, okay? Now, overall, this actually, you know, we're not going to have many locations, and the mayor has to make a community host agreement. So any other things that anyone was talking about beforehand, until someone has a community host agreement, until they come up here, and as far as my memory goes, we're forgetting about that one, you also gave a permit to a delivery-only place right behind the prime gas station, so that actually counts, and they haven't had any problems. There haven't been any problems with Mr. Affa down at Quincy Cannabis Company. I actually thought there that, you know, traffic might be somewhat of an issue, but it's a good traffic plan, okay? And after reviewing Mr. Gillum's traffic plan, that looks good. So, I mean, they've checked off every box that I want. The operator of this, Mr. Lang, we're lucky that he wants to do business in the city. So, you know, this is a good project. We're not going to have a hundred marijuana establishments in the city. We're probably going to have four or five, but we're going to get tax money from all four or five of them. So that's all I have to say. I'm in favor of this, and I think you should approve this.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else, last call? All our party here have been closed. Any requirements? No?
You missed all the books that I had to read last week.
Yeah, I know, I'm so glad. I watched you.
Appreciate it.
No, okay. It's our turn. You can just leave.
Can I read these in? Let me see. I don't know how to read these ones. I definitely didn't read that book.
That book. Just give us, give a synopsis of each, don't go crazy.
I like it. Opposition, Tomahore Yasuda, seventy-four Pleasant Street, I think, did you speak, Stacey?
Yes.
Was that your letter that you also sent in? Did you also send in an email?
Yeah.
Since you spoke, we'll disregard, but we'll put it in the feed file. Nishi, is that, is that you? Okay, I'll read yours in because you didn't speak. Writing this letter to express my concerns regarding the granting of a special permit to the proposed recreational marijuana dispensary at fifteen Liberty Street. While I'm in favor of legalization of recreational marijuana, I strongly believe that its distribution should occur within a framework of well-defined rules and regulations, particularly as is marked the initial stations of legal marijuana distribution in the state. A crucial aspect of this process is responsibility demonstrated by those who manage and operate recreational marijuana dispensaries, showing a strong commitment to their surrounding community. An important initial step in showcasing responsibility is adherence to the zoning ordinance. The existence of zoning regulations at the outset serves a purpose, and it's vital for all stakeholders to respect these rules. In this context, I draw attention to the smart park situated across from the proposed dispensary location, a park which the dispensary seeks exemption from consideration. This space could inadvertently become an attractive spot for impulsive customers to consume marijuana immediately after purchase. With the presence of branches with neighbors' rest, a word this park might turn into an uncomfortable environment due to such activities. The vicinity encompassing both the fifteen Liberty, both the park and fifteen Liberty Street is not prominent thoroughfare or public space, making it conducive for those who prefer discretion, including individuals struggling with addiction, minors, or individuals with a disregard for responsibility. This raises concerns about the primary customer base the dispensary might attract and the potential negative influence it could exert on the surrounding community. Moreover, the presence of nearby bus stops compound my unease. The prospect of encountering irresponsible marijuana consumers while waiting for the bus is disconcerting. Unlike a bustling commercial area, the relative lack of public presence here renders this location less secure, and incidents can go unnoticed. This corner also falls along my route to Quincy Outlets T. From my residence, walking past this area after dark poses a sense of unease, as the hidden nature of the dispensary might attract certain individuals, further raising safety concerns. Although the dispensary is more than five hundred away from both the third and Lincoln Hancock, adjacent to Kincaid Park, a southwest middle school, opening a recreational marijuana dispensary within easy-walking distance of these educational institutions is a decision I question. Placing such a dispensary in the heart of a residential area with many children and adolescents is unsuitable when considering the accessibility of marijuana to minors. Responsible dispensary owners should ideally choose a location distinctly separated from residential areas or bustling commercial zone. My utmost concern lies in the lack of confidence I hold in individuals managing fifteen Liberty Street. Their disregard for basic responsibilities such as clearing snow, assaulting the sidewalk during winter, or inconsiderably parking their vehicles reflects a lack of accountability of good neighbors. These behaviors coupled with their non-compliance with zoning ordinance raise doubts about the capacity to operate a dispensary responsibly. Parking emergencies is another issue as dispensary count commence operations, given the presence of BJ's gas stations off Liberty Street. Traffic jams are frequent in the area. The garage is often filled with cars, provides little room for additional parking. The prospect of dispensary customers parking on Liberty Street or Water Street further exacerbates the situation with limited controls over their actions. exacerbates the situation with limited controls over their actions. I'm convinced that the neighborhood is ill-prepared for a marijuana, recreational marijuana dispensary. Although the area has undergone positive changes, remnants of challenges remain such as problematic individuals on Pleasant Street and persistent issues along Water Street. The introduction of recreational marijuana dispensary at this juncture seems premature, a decision that could adversely affect both the neighborhood and the nascent marijuana industry. Given the uncertainties that may arise over the next few years, I believe it's unnecessary for the neighborhood to bear the brunt of these potential issues. The neighborhood features numerous apartment buildings and my concern that these establishments might attract tenants inclined towards irresponsible marijuana use to the presence of the dispensary. Alternatively, responsible individuals might shy away from renting in this area, given their reservations about the dispensary's influence. Taking into account the aforementioned concerns, I am firmly opposed to the approval of a special permit for the proposed recreational marijuana dispensary at 15 Liberty Street. Thank you. 74 Pleasant Street. I read this one the last time. Thank you for the best letter I've ever written.
And just so the board knows, I have a letter here from Traffic Engineer Allison Rule. An email came in late today to the board. She's showing it to me now. And she just has some comments she's gonna write in with the plans and we can put that in that they can look at Mr. Conlin and work with her in the traffic study and make sure it's with Mr. Conlin's approval that they get together if there's any changes. And I'll take care of that. Anything else? Uh, it's about it. No, it's us. You know, as I said, as I drove around and looked, I thought there'd be more people. Maybe at the wrong times, I sit there for an hour and then I go back another three days. It's not what I thought. Now, when I went up to the medical place and I watched, it was like two or three cars constant, constant. One out, one in. Two out, two come in. One in, one out. It was just constant. There was always three or four cars parked up there. It's a very busy place up there. And she got millions of spots to park up there, but, uh, and the rotary. The rotary was empty. Sometimes I didn't even know if it was open. I had to look to see if it was open. I thought that place would be really busy too and it wasn't. So I'm not concerned about really very business. I'm concerned about what's there now that I don't like. Cars all over that place and making that intersection look worse than it is. It's almost like a horror show when you're driving around, you're looking at all these cars everywhere. I think it's gonna be good. I do. And I will be voting in favor 'cause I think it's gonna be a good, it's gonna be a new look. It's gonna be a new build. It's gonna have a nice car in there. And you're gonna, you're gonna need, you're gonna need. So I'll be voting in favor.
I think, you know, much like we hear reservations about a new large development in an area, I firmly believe that, to Mr. Dunn's point, that the city continues to change and adapt and grow. And I understand Mr. Lyons' point about, you know, kinda feeling saturated in that neighborhood, but unfortunately, we don't dictate who applies to us. We dictate the specific situation. The specific situation that I view, I view as an easy access in terms of not driving through multiple neighborhoods. It's pretty easy on, easy off from Bergen Parkway. It's pretty minimal impact in terms of, you know, additional traffic. I think that, you know, we constantly hear about traffic and on this board, I will continue to say it, people have a heightened sense of awareness of traffic when they're in it and they don't when they don't, you know? And I certainly, and I certainly can appreciate those sentiments. I pounded my wheel too at 7:30 in the morning, but I've also driven around on Sunday morning at 9:00 AM and there's not a soul driving in the city of Quincy. So, you know, that being said, I'm in favor. I think it's a, I think that the owners that we have presented being both doctors are, we're blessed to have people that wanna run a business in the city of that caliber and, you know, certainly from a legality standpoint of how the city views it, I'm certain that the ward counselor in that area can work with the neighbors to make sure that, you know, the park is continued to be well-maintained and hopefully that the new owners and operators, if so approved, that they work to well, to maintain that park as well and to make sure that their clientele is not abusing the privileges that we granted to them.
Yep. Mr. Hill, any comments?
Well, yeah, I got a few. I had requested the easements and, you know, one way in, one way out, and having said that, they did comply with that. I don't like the idea. I don't like the idea of capitulating the 1,500 feet down to something very much less. But it is change. Change is what makes a city grow. I, you know, I like one way in, I like one way out, I would prefer right only. I would prefer that the establishment put notices up saying, you know, the park is off limits, the use of our product would be kind of a nice idea. Might be nice if you adopted the park, the cleanup, but having said that, I will be voting in favor.
In my opinion, the applicant has met the requirements for relief shop. Name is Jim.
I'll be in favor also.
O'Brien? Uh, one thing about the lights, the lighting and the thing I was asking about.
Yeah, yeah, I forgot about that. Yeah, we were gonna, we took both those signs. They agreed in the last meeting to take them down to the...
To the minimum.
To the minimal size, correct? Right, council?
I just wanted to make sure we had that.
Yeah, they were both the same size, that's my answer.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so we reduced them down to the minimal size.
That's what I heard, I gotta make sure.
Yeah, we can put that in the...
Yeah. We'll put that in the decision. Why not motion with the decision?
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 2364 Cloud and I Cannabis LLC for a special permit in various to open and operate a recreational marijuana dispensary on the premise number 15 Liberty Street, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the special permit in various with an easement for access and exit, or exit only through the neighboring property, as well as reducing the signs to standard minimums, standard maximum allowed within the city. Is that correct?
Yep. And also, Mr. Conlin will go over with the Traffic Engineer.
And also...
Or a common serving.
And also the Traffic Engineer's adherence.
Second.
On the motion, seeing that all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. President of tonight's agenda, ZBA 2351 Russell Chin will be leaving. Jeff Frankel will be in. Sorry, Russell. Thanks, Clay. ZBA 2351 Patrick Foley for various to raise the roof lines on the existing three-family home, increase the living area on the premises number 166th Ave. The applicant or councilor, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley and I'm here representing 166th Ave. We presented about six weeks ago and just to refresh everyone's memory, we're proposing to do...
And...
Oh, 166th...
No, no, you're at...
Oh, 265 Bullard Street.
Thank you, Patrick.
That's a new one. I didn't give that.
That's what you were and you moved on.
All right, tough guy to find. Yeah, just to refresh everyone's memory, what we were proposing to do the last time here is currently on the site is a non-conforming three-family. The applicant is seeking to keep it a three-family and there was concerns, two of the units are staying roughly the same size, but the third unit's gonna be getting bigger. So there was a concern because currently right now, the parking at the home now is a driveway that has two cars. I know the board was concerned about all the cars on the street. So we went back and worked with the neighborhood. I know Richard from the civic group. We sent him the plans. He was fantastic working with. So we were able to increase the parking to six spots. We're giving four new spots in Austin Hughes, so the parking plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so basically, we're gonna be adding these original two spots. We're gonna be grading the road down to the back, the 10% grade per group, and we're gonna add additional five spots and maintain it. So we're gonna be adding this.
Plan for asphalt or impervious?
All right, we're bringing on the asphalt. Yeah.
Asphalt?
Yeah.
Yeah, no. We gotta do something about that. That's a lot of, I mean, you paved that whole three quarters of the yard. So we're gonna have to figure out something better than that. I wouldn't be in favor at all. I mean, you need your road down there.
Yeah.
When you get down there, you gotta figure out something about...
Are you...
You're down so low, it's...
Yeah.
Where's the water?
Yeah, I got it.
It's gonna sit there. It's like...
Can we do some impervious? Even a drainage?
Well, even if, you know, I mean, he's gotta bring his road down. That's a big...
Yeah, it's only going down 10%.
He's probably gonna come down to here somewhere, from the house back, that whole area there.
Yeah.
He's gotta put something in there. I don't know. Something that goes through.
Yeah, that's kinda what we'll do. That's what he just...
He's only saying somewhere like that.
Basically from where his middle line is there, you see? Like kinda from the end of the house, roughly? Does it flatten out basically by the end of the house based on your plans?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So something around there, like making that impervious.
Yeah, you gotta build the road down, right? But when you get down that back area down low like that, you gotta put something back there. It's gonna drain water. He's filling half a jack, you know? What can you, what can you come up with there, councilor?
Something impervious.
That we can all talk about?
Yeah. Gravel?
Gravel?
Gravel, whatever. Yeah.
Whatever you gotta do, it'll sit there and work with the city.
I know gravel might be a challenge with plumb back there, so, you know, whatever you can come up with, that's creative to find something, you know, that'll just help drain that area, you know? 'Cause you did a good job getting the cars off the street and still with the ability to turn, like even that second car can still turn around, you know? So I appreciate that.
Sure. Yeah, we'll have to work with the board to...
Any ideas? Mr. Conlin?
Impervious pavers?
Yep.
Impervious pavers, even pavers would be fine, you know?
Put a little gravel.
Yeah, put a little gravel.
Lots of pavers.
It doesn't smell here anymore anyway, so. Just get the torrential down.
Some pavers.
Yeah.
Impervious pavers. Impervious pavers.
Maybe make it somewhere like the house back.
So some, yeah, somewhere around the end of the house and back, where you start to flatten out there, you know?
Yep.
The wall.
So Mr. Conlin said he'd take care of anything, you know?
Yeah, where it flattens out, right?
Yeah, once it flattens out, he'll make sure that whole area is down there. And now everyone in the audience knows that we're talking about not paving the back hole back out, just the road going down.
And now...
Any other questions? Anything else? That's it?
Cool, thank you.
All right. If anyone here, now that we know that that road is just gonna be built going down, then they're gonna put all impervious so the water can flow through down there. It's not gonna just be sitting in a pool of tar. Does anyone wanna speak in favor of this? First call, second call? Third call closed? Cars bottom? Nothing left? No? All right. All our party here been closed. Anyone opposing on the side? We step forward, name an address for the record, please.
Joe Randy, 146th Ave.
Go ahead.
I was really hoping that they could've put more parking because from experience, I have an apartment building across the street and there's nine spots there and there's 18 cars. And I can see a similar situation here in having six spaces and there being 10 cars associated with that building. So from experience, I really would like to try to squeeze a couple more parking spots down.
There's one more, there's one more he has there and the other one...
Yes, I saw the five.
I don't like that at all. But there's...
I mean, there's surely no, like, I guess you could come up here further, like you could go here.
Yeah, I mean, you could. You could bring this back a little.
You might pick up one.
You could pick up maybe one or two.
One would be better than...
Yeah. And I mean, we could move half, half, half the length down if you wanna do something like that.
Oh, you got your line here. So go all the way? What's this? What's in here?
That's just...
Does it drop off even further?
No, just give me a measurement.
Yeah, no, but does it drop off even further or something there?
I know, I looked down. It's a big hole, it's a big long one.
Yeah, I know, I...
I can't remember the last time I was there. I remember we had to do something to get power down there somehow. It was gonna stink, but...
I mean, that's, it's well over the parking requirement.
Oh, it is, but we can also get...
You require four, right? Four and a half?
I thought seven was the requirement.
4.5, right? One and a half?
According to the document, I'm looking at it seven.
He's gonna have, he's gonna have six in here now.
Yeah, yes.
Probably get seven. We could probably get the seven one in here. Right here, yeah.
We require two per?
Yeah.
Two per bedroom?
No, two per unit.
Yeah, so plus one guests, is that what it says? Is that what you...
I just have documents here.
I know what he wants and I wouldn't mind that myself, to get six back there, right? And, uh... Yeah. So, um, thank you. We'll talk to the client.
Okay, I have some other questions.
Okay, go ahead.
It wasn't, I, one question was about the drain. It just seems you're concerned about that, so that's been asked. Are these spaces going to be assigned or are they open?
I don't know, they got enough so they can assign them. That's up to the, that's up to the owner. He could do what he wants. He's got plenty. He'll have, he'll have enough parking space. I'll ask him.
All right, but the form that I downloaded from the site...
It did. He did, the commissioner just confirmed that it is. So I was confused with resby in a dwelling, it's two per plus one guests. So if there is a parking variance, it'd be required if they're only asking for six. So you're...
He's gonna get a seven spot.
So we're gonna figure out how to get a seven.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my, we see a lot of different stuff. It was just, it was just me confusing where...
Okay, that's fine. I also noticed in this document that the property is listed as being in West Quincy. Don't know how that happens, but...
All right, thank you guys. Is there anyone else? Opposing on the side? Second call? Third call?
Could we do it, like?
Yeah.
I'm just looking.
No, we could, we could move back. You can do a half and a half. You can just move a half.
Over here.
No, you move a half.
Members of the board, Anthony Andronko, twenty-four Nickel Street, Wyndham Councilor. About week and a half, two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to join Joe and just take a quick look at the site over there. I just wanted to reiterate how the parking situation is on Sixth Ave. As mentioned, the apartment building across the street, it's like parking wars every single night on that street. You got visitors, you got people who have more cars than are allotted through assigned parking on that street. From recollection, directly in front of the property, there's a fire hydrant. So even, you know, that potential overnight parking or, you know, have someone pull up and park in front of your house is not really available at this particular site. When you're looking at the house on the left-hand side, I believe it's the utility pole there, and they're looking to squeeze in, you know, one parking space over there. It's awfully tight. The property lines between the neighbors there sort of comes in on itself. So the further you pull your car in, the less space you're gonna get to put a vehicle there. Just really wanna reiterate for this one in particular, how important the parking regulations are. So I appreciate the consideration to add another space. And that you're already on top of the drainage issue that would be caused in the back from adding more parking. But that's just the only consideration that I have. I appreciate you taking the time tonight and just wanna keep that in mind.
Thanks, councilor, thanks for hanging in.
Of course, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else? Last call? All our party hearing closed. If you're with your client, you can, you can, here's what I'm trying to, here's what we're trying to get as a board. Trying to get a half space here and a half space here, so we're gonna move them all down. So it'll be one, two, three, four. Right?
Pull that off?
You can pull it off.
I think you can pull that off.
Yeah, you can pull it off with a set of wall pavings down there too.
At least when there's no small, small people.
So we're gonna have four, four spaces. So everyone knows we're gonna have four spaces on this side, two there, and then one car up here. So they're gonna make six down below instead of five, okay? Any other questions on that? No? Thank you. All right. If they do that imperviously, you get a flow-through water, I'm happy. And just the road, of course, the road's gonna be.
Yeah, I think.
David's windlass in the area going down there.
I think the situation is excessively better.
Oh, yeah.
Than what's existing today.
Right.
And I understand the concerns about parking completely. I understand the council's concerns as well, you know, about the street and the access on the street. I just think that, you know, this situation, even with five, with six, would be so much better. So I'll be in favor with adding the seven spots.
Yeah, I'll be in favor with seven spots. That's a tight neighborhood.
It is. Same, I agree.
Yeah, great.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA twenty-three fifty-one Patrick Foley for a variance to raise the roof lines of the existing family home to increase the living area on the premise sixteen Sixth Avenue Quincy to make a motion to grant the variance with impervious pavers in the pervious, not impervious. Yeah, impervious wouldn't work. Impervious pavers in the back to help the runoff as well as adding a seven parking spot.
Second.
Did you say second? Oh, I thought you said six. I didn't hear him. I didn't hear him. I didn't get no shit seventy the other day, God.
Why, happy birthday, old man.
Yeah, crazy. Been here twenty years, maybe nineteen too long, I don't know.
Probably twenty, but.
I said nineteen too long. On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
I thought you were fifty-two.
Thank you guys, that's why I tell everybody.
Thank you.
And a new business, ZBA twenty-three fifty-nine JCPT Architect LLC for a variance to construct a three-story, two-unit townhouse style dwelling on the premises number zero South Street. The applicant and their representative here?
Yes.
Here they are.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Chen, five eight five Washington Street, Quincy. Uh, just, so the subject property, two eleven South Street. It's a vacant land. It's currently about six thousand one hundred thirty, thirty-nine square feet, also known as Zero South Street. Located in resby zone in the strip. So what we're proposing is a new three-story, two-family townhouse style with three-bedroom plus two-and-a-half baths with two garage parking per units. Uh, the proposed area of the entire structure is about fifty-six hundred, including the garage, in which are thirty-eight hundred square feet of living, as proposed for the two units. Each unit will have about nineteen hundred of living space with three beds, two-and-a-half baths. So this vacant property is not a typical flat land, level land. It has an elevation change more than seven, seven to eight feet from the street to the midsection of the lot. Also, it's a irregular shape of the lot makes it very difficult to conform with a two-size setback to have a decent overall width of the structure. Also, a professional visual inspection of the site, in the case that's a huge bedrock and ledge located in front section and midsection of the site. And there are typographical soil condition and irregular lot shape hardship that are present in this site and can become quite challenging. The property is surrounded by a larger rollhouse, townhouse style units to the right, a mixture of singles and multifamily units in the immediate proximity, ranging from two to three-story in height. And we're seeking variance for dimensional requirements for the minimum lot size, lot width, frontage, to side yard setback, rear yard setback, and a number of parking in the maximum four area ratio.
You didn't, it's not enough. Something else to ask?
It's a hard site.
Yeah, I guess it is. Question on the existing condition. So sixty-one thirty-nine and then requested sixty-four, is that because of the shortening of the street or something?
Excuse me?
What? Where are you gaining this three hundred feet? It says existing. Nothing's being done, but you changed it to sixty-four seventy-eight.
It's a vacant lot, so there's nothing existing.
No, I know, but you got sixty-one thirty-nine, you got a number in there. You need dimensions. And then you change it to sixty-four seventy-eight. What's the real number?
That is incorrect.
Kind of bizarre.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then I looked through things, I saw the nineteen twenty something, nineteen forty something. They changed the road, you lost some frontage, and I'm wondering if that's why they're claiming. Because the city took some of your.
I'm not sure how that happens, but.
No.
Survey shows sixty-one.
Sixty-one thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine.
Right. And then it says existing conditions, right?
That's wrong.
Sixty-four seventy-eight.
That's wrong.
That's wrong. Now, one of them is wrong, that's right. That's why.
Sixty-one thirty-nine.
But then when you get down, when you get down the minimum area per dwelling unit, that's wrong too now. It's thirty-two thirty-nine, which is half of the other, sixty-four seventy-eight. So what's right here? What numbers are right?
Geez, sorry about that.
You know what I'm saying? Everything's going off this request. But where'd that number come from? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
The correct number is sixty-one thirty-nine, and the minimum lot area per dwelling should be based on, based off of sixty-one thirty-nine.
All right, so it says point eight six. Is that, that's on sixty-four seventy-eight, so what's the real number? Is it nine? Am I, could you calculate that out quick? You did this in two minutes, why not? If this file, eighty-six, is from the requesting condition of sixty-four, now we're down three hundred and fifty feet, three hundred and thirty-four feet. That's the number. That wouldn't be that, it would be more, you're like, maybe not, correct? Oh, it is like a point nine, is it correct?
Yeah.
Your file not the point eight six, I mean, if we're gonna put numbers in here, let's make them like.
Sorry about that.
Wanna figure that out for me? You know, just put a number here, point nine.
Do you want me to correct it?
Well, yeah, I'd like to know. We all should know what we got for our file reading on the property.
So the, uh. It'll be zero point nine one.
Nine one, I was close. Zero point nine one. Got there, guys?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So these other numbers, they're not, you know, minimum area, that should be whatever, thirty, eighty, thirty-three, thirty-four, or something. All those numbers are wrong, going all the way down. All right. We'll fix them. But the files are what I was, you know, we're going.
The file, huh?
Yeah, it's from point four to nine, so it's more than doubled, but, all right. I mean. Go ahead, you can continue now. Smell the interruption.
I'm finished.
I know what you're asking for is a lot, and I know the site's not good, but to me, it's just, I can't do that. I just can't build something that's over twice what the father, so they come up with something better than that. But that's just me, so I'll just be a no vote and figure it out here. Move down. You have any questions?
I have.
No.
No questions.
No questions.
Not at this time.
All right, let the public speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wanna speak in favor of this application?
Just for the record, my name is Shranket, living in one ninety-nine South Street.
One ninety-nine what?
South Street.
Okay.
Close proximity to the zeros.
Yeah.
Street, and I just, uh, this is my first meet here coming into this hall, and I.
Good.
You guys.
Little humor once in a while, you get a little.
No, it's my first visit. Though I live in this one ninety-nine South Street for more than close to eighteen years now.
Yeah.
And the property is, we never knew that it's going to be some owner coming out and building a property. We got a letter from Anthony, the board counselor, thank you for sending the letter. I'm here representing for all the four units. I live in one of the units in the four-unit condo, one ninety-nine South Street. So I appreciate a new building is coming up, and we just wanted to have a little concern about the construction timing, when it's going to begin, or the noise and the traffic control and the basic things, when it's all gonna be, are we gonna be sharing with us?
That'll all be shared with you, but it's not been approved yet, so.
Oh, it's not approved, okay.
But when that's approved, you'll have.
So they have to adhere to the timelines that the city provides? I think it's what, seven to?
Twelve months?
Seven to five?
I don't know, seven to five.
Monday through Saturday?
We got that one in twelve months?
So my little concern is there were a couple of trees around that area. We just wanna make sure that our borders are covered, secured, and so on.
Have they taken care of?
Taken care of.
All right.
Now, how many units are actually, it's a two units?
Two units.
Two units there. Two owners? Oh, two units, I don't know, is it?
Two units, could be, these are condos?
These are condos, right?
Yeah.
That's two, okay.
Two, two of them.
Okay. That's all I want.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else wanna speak in favor? Second call? Third call? All party hearing closed, anything on the correspondence? DPW, I got a letter right here.
We reviewed this middle for the development project in our commentaries fall. One, specify how much impervious area will be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, creating drainage, and the construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Five, explain how to remove the huge bedrocks and ledges on the site for construction. Will there be any blasting used? Six, upon completion of the project, after a plan showing all utilities and building footprints need to be submitted along with a digital file.
Call of party hearing closed. Is there anyone opposing on the side? First call? Second call? Third call closed? Uh, I don't know, guys, but I can't.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask anything you want.
Jim, was, is this a new purchase of a lot?
Yes.
Okay, and was it always an existing self-standing lot? Or was there any, was this subdivided at some point? Did you do any?
No, so it was always an existing self-standing lot.
Okay, so it's just sat there as a vacant lot for however long it's been? Okay.
So I just wanna ask something to the, about the FAR. The FAR includes the first floor parking space, garage. If it was just the living space, it would calculate it out to be about point sixteen.
I know, but you're all around. I mean, you need a side setback, front setback, front relief, side relief, rear relief. It's just like, shrink it down for me. I know it's smaller, that's the lot you wanna buy. Build something that can go there. Maybe build a nice big house for something. I just don't think, not what I'm looking for. I just think it's asked way too much. And I think we're getting just too crowded in Quincy as it is, and now we're putting stuff like this. I should stop myself.
You do?
I will. Really, I just, I just, when do we stop? You know? It's like overcrowding, and then we're jamming in these things. It's not necessary. That's not necessary for Quincy. To me.
I get it.
As the chairman is on.
I get it. And not to disagree, I just don't know how much, like, I don't think a single family's gonna have the same FAR on that lot. You know, somebody's gonna build a monster, a single family, I think we're strapped for units. And I think, look, I get it's big, I get it's taking up the whole lot.
Stop the humans, where we stop the humans?
I get it, it was strapped for units, so people need housing.
They need housing, but do we jam in places like this? And just jam in a place? To me, it's like, let's do a little smarter building, let's look at, maybe at the end of that road, nice house, we go there, someone makes a few bucks, builds a house. You don't have to make a million dollars on every project. And to me, you know, you're giving away the house. It's just, to me, it's too much. That's just, that's just me. It's just me, it's just like, I see you crowding, 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 it's like.
Express the indifference.
I know, I know, I know that, but we could put something there that'll look nicer to them too, not just jammed in there and then take up all the land. I know.
Yeah, two nineteen hundred square foot units there is just too much.
It is. Like, you could shrink that down, like, nice, small, get two bedrooms on that, I don't care. You can't build it for that, don't build it. Next.
I agree. Bring setbacks into compliance and see if they are up to just too much.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Right?
Can you go back to the drawing board?
Sunday.
What do you wanna say?
Anything else you can build in, and you wanna put this off for a month, or what do you wanna do?
Try and shrink the units down a little?
Make it down a lot.
Human ball. At least five hundred square feet is what it sounds like.
All right, we'll come back with a revised.
Yeah.
No, months, six weeks?
What do you need, month?
All right, what do you get for, October twenty-fourth, there you go.
October twenty-fourth?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
October twenty-fourth. I make a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA twenty-three fifty-nine JCPT Architect LLC for a variance to construct a three-story, two-unit townhouse style dwelling on the premises number zero South Street, Quincy. I make a motion to move that to October twenty-fourth.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? So moved. Further, under new business, case number ZBA twenty-three sixty-seven Jeffrey Dunn for variance, special permit, flood plain and finding to demolish the existing home and construct a new, flood compliant, single-family dwelling, number seven, Shoreside Road. Mr. LaRoche?
Chairman, members of the board, Brian LaRoche, sixty-seven Mirzav, I'm going to be representing the applicant, Jeffrey Dunn, on, uh, this project at seven Shoreside. Uh, the house, a single-family house that we're proposing for, uh, this site, uh, would replace an existing, uh, home that was flooded in the twenty-eighteen storm, uh, so this is an area that is subject to flooding, it's in a floodplain overlay district, uh, so we'll be requesting a special permit for this project. Um, so what we would like to do here is, uh, you know, get rid of this structure, use the voluntary demolition clause in zoning, uh, build off of the same footprint, uh, along the right edge of the property here. Um, the house as it exists right now is very close to Shoreside, so here's Shoreside.
Yeah.
Uh, C Street, uh, runs along here and Post Island is here, there is one other, uh, property adjacent. So in order to align with some of the other houses on Shoreside, uh, we would like to pull it back, I think that would be appropriate. Uh, so I've outlined in blue here, uh, the footprint of the existing dwelling, and then you can see in red is the proposed dwelling. Uh, it's relatively a flat site, um, does sort of pitch inward, uh, to an area in the back here, so all the drainage on this property would actually stay on-site, it collects in the rear here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're asking for a few, uh, things on top of the special permit, um, as I mentioned, the finding, uh, for voluntary demolition, which is section, uh, three-point-four-seven of the, uh, zoning ordinance, uh, we're also asking for, uh, finding on the vertical and horizontal extension of a non-conforming use, uh, which is section three-point-four-five. Uh, we're also looking to, uh, confirm through a finding that, um, the lot coverage, uh, for an expansion within a flood zone, uh, not exceed twenty-five percent. Uh, we have a lot that's five thousand eight hundred and eighty-six square feet, twenty-five percent of that would be, uh, fourteen ninety-two, uh, our footprint of the building is eleven ninety-two, so we would not be exceeding that. Uh, so we just wanted to make sure that we read that into the record.
Yep.
Um, so we do have a few variances as well, uh, a number of stories, um, and really, uh, it's because we're in a floodplain, uh, in order to elevate, um, we have, uh, at the lowest level here, uh, you can see this blue line, that's the, uh, flood, designed flood elevation, so half of the lower level, uh, is in floodplain. So in order to, uh, take advantage of, you're already moving it up that high, we wanted to use that lower level for parking and for storage. Um, and so we do have, uh, at the front, um, you have double gar, garage door, the entry-in, at the rear, we also have a garage door, that's nothing more than allow the, for the free flow of water, which we know, uh, during the storms will happen. Um, and then, you know, if they're going to have, uh, or you know, back, whatever, they have the door open and then they can sort of set up some things inside, it's nothing more for convenience, there's no cars or vehicles being parked at the rear. Um, and then, uh, the other variance we're looking for is height, um, and the upper level of this, uh.
That's what we want to talk about.
Yeah, and if, for sure, understood. Um, and so what we have here in this design is a, um, a widow's walk to take advantage of some of the views, uh, towards the city, uh, straight off the front of the house, looking, uh, towards the north is, uh, the Boston skyline, uh, so the widow's walk would allow that. Um, and so the widow's walk, which is really an impertinence on the roof, is what's driving that height, we're measuring to, um, actually, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, we're measuring to the peak, we're not measuring to the widow's walk, which is about a foot higher than the, the peak. Um, and, uh, what we had in the design is that the area of the widow's walk underneath is, uh, a loft space, we've kept it to just under two hundred square feet, it is nothing more for coming up and then passing along and then doing up the shipside or to the roof. Uh, we have an area for mechanical and we have a little bit of attic, uh, storage space. Uh, so there's no windows, no dormers, no nothing other than, you know, it's the widow's stuff, uh, walking up.
Now, that house is looking at the new house almost that we just built, the carriage house.
Eight, ten, uh, Shoreside, correct?
You have to get almost over that carriage house to see.
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, because I was looking at it and I'm saying, I understand now the widow's walk, why he really wants that.
Yeah.
Because you're going to miss half the ocean on that side.
Correct, yeah, so you do get, uh, you do get above, uh, eight to ten Shoreside, uh, with the widow's walk.
It's a second multi, right?
No, 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 it's the, the guy that, the guy that built the same house, he built the same house.
The same house, the second house.
And then he's got the second house in the back, yeah, which is really, come on, nice, man, five people.
And so, so the, the three, so the three variances, one is the number of stories.
Yeah.
Uh, it's four, uh, because of the loft space counts as a story.
Right.
Uh, if we had framed the upper level attic, uh, to have everything come to a common, uh, ridge beam, uh, it would not have counted, but because we're intercepting the framing and we're able to sort of walk at full height here, it does count as a story, so, um, you know, so that.
It's quasi.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's, it's, it is a story by definition, uh, it's, but it really is not functional for anything other than passing through to be able to get to the, uh, upper level.
Was there any, uh, with the, with the, uh, mechanical stuff, there's, are there, that's where they're all on, right? Because you have to be off the base level, right?
Yeah, well, we have a mechanical room on the first floor, which covers your air handler for, for the first, and then, uh, we have the air handler for the upper level is in that, uh, little mechanical room up there. So we do have a, uh, utility space here, uh, which is where we have the boiler.
And by first floor, you mean?
Second floor.
Yeah, main, main living, not the ground.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, and then the last variance, which I haven't mentioned yet, is the, uh, the paving of the yards, there's a requirement, uh, that we cannot exceed thirty percent, uh, but when you count, um, the, you know, this is the Shoreside frontage, uh, but when you look at the entire property and come all the way around and count this frontage, we don't exceed the thirty percent threshold, uh, but we would along Shoreside.
But you're just doing the front on Shoreside?
We're currently doing, uh, driveway, uh, along here and then a little bit here, so we can have, uh, a car on this side.
Right.
And then we can sort of pull off the road here. Uh, the width of the driveway at the front also does exceed, uh, that requirement of twenty.
Is that for the antique cost?
You know? No, it's not.
Huh?
Um, so the width of driveway, which is section five-point-one-four, is also another variance we're looking for. And that is, uh.
I, I get, I get what the whole thing is down there, and I'll tell you, that's it, it's a, it's a weird property anyway, to where that, that, that little house is right there, all by that little wall there, you'd think they would have cut that yard out, you know what I mean? Like that guy would have had a piece of property on that side.
That's how you guys did things back then.
Exactly.
You guys just drew arbitrary lines.
Arbitrary lines, and that house was never there, and then they built that house, for a cause, and then it became a house.
Was that before your seventieth birthday?
That was like, that was like about when I was ninety-four, we did that.
So the, uh, the total, uh, square footage of the house, if you include the loft, uh, would be, uh, twenty-five, uh, two thousand five hundred ninety-one, if you don't include it, it's twenty-three ninety-two, so still pretty modest home, uh, it's three bedrooms, two and a half baths.
For sure.
It's a beautiful design, I really like it, I love the, I love the walk, so, uh.
John's, uh, this house on Allerton was the other house that I did the widow's walk, have you guys seen that?
And, uh, and when the house in front of me goes up, I might be looking for an architect to do something for widow's walk. All right, buddy.
Like, how old will you be then, will you be able to get up there?
I'm going to have an elevator, come on, it's an elevator. Let me ride my motorcycle up. Thank you, Brian, any questions?
The only other one I had, so, basically, if, if we looked at this without the widow's walk, just hypothetically, there's, there's no difference in what the roof height would be, it would be in terms of what the, uh, what we would call another story, is that, is that, is it?
The widow's walk wasn't there, it would be an attic, and there would be no, it would not be a story.
But because we have to create the access, that's, that's what creates what, what we're calling a third story, basically.
And we interrupted the ridge line too, so.
Right.
Yeah.
That, that.
And that's what's doing.
No, no, we often get, you know, beat up about, you know, we talk about this third story lot, and I, and I, and I just want to clarify.
The first story.
It's still not really a livable area, which is out, we're not creating an additional story, we're just creating access.
It's, it's actually, by definition, four stories, the ground.
Ground level, yeah, but, I mean, we took that, like, I, I take that away when I have a floodplain, because I, I, look, I deal with, with flood insurance every day in my life, and to get out of the floodplain is more important than anything else, you know what I mean? And, and to have the pass-through the way you do, if that's more important for, for the environment, like, we want to talk about it from an environmental fact, that, that's negligible at that point, because you have the pass-through for, for the water to come.
You still have the floodbents, uh, which are in the foundation, so it equalizes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call? All power is closed. Paris Barnes, councillor, one sec. I have here, we've reviewed the above reference middle, have no comments.
Uh, good evening, Dave McCarthy, uh, forty-eight.
Councillor, how are you?
Ordinance councillor.
Always a pleasure to see you.
How was that primary today?
What was what?
It would have been, I said, how was that primary?
Why, why? But here to support the Duns, uh, they've been in the area for decades, uh, it's nice to see Jeffrey wanting to stick around, and it's nice that that area, which took a, a pounding, as we all know, in two thousand eighteen, is getting some nice work, and, uh, Mr. LaRoche is, uh, always does nice work in that area, he's done a lot of work in Post Allen, I think you'll get a few more, uh, on Shoreside, that are, uh, going to fall into play here, but I'm in full support, it'll be, uh, it's a beautiful neighborhood, uh, as they slowly fix up some of these, as you said, Mr. Chairman, little cottages that have been little cottages forever, that are going to be homes, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor, we just approved one in front of him too, on the other side, that, we got a lot that we, uh, built over there too, the double. I have one here, it says, um, this is Matthew Freed, uh, six fifty-one, C Street, number two, I have, I received a letter today about the case, but will not be able to attend the meeting about seven Shoreside. As an abbot, I have no concerns with these plans to replace the single-family home, living with a new single-family home, cheers. Uh, you can say that.
Hold on a second.
Is there anyone opposed on the side? First call, second call, third call closed? I mean, I know it's, it's, it's the wording, the fourth story that blows everyone's mind, but we see why, and if we explain why to people, it's not a fourth story, it's just a walkthrough to get to the widow's walk, I mean, voting in favor.
Again, this is why we exist, you know?
That's why we.
To look, to look at individuals and, and to understand them, and, and so I'll be in favor.
In favor, great looking design, love, in favor.
Pretty house. Have a motion please, in favor.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, uh, ZBA twenty-three sixty-seven, I make a motion, Jeffrey Dunn for a variance, special permit floodplain and finding to demolish the existing home, construct a new flood compliant, single-family dwelling on the premise number seven, Shoreside Road, Quincy, make a motion to grant the variance, special permit floodplain and finding. So.
On the motion, standing on, let me think about this one. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, so moved.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated. Thank you guys, yep.
Thank you, boy.
One more case, thank you, thank you, Mr. Dunn, have a nice, Jeffrey, congratulations, and here are your property. Uh, SDR twenty-three five, help me with this name.
Agnieszka.
Agnieszka. Agnieszka?
Yes.
For a special permit to operate a short-term rental business on the premises, number one, thirty, Elm Street, how are you?
I'm good, so, um, I'm, uh, on behalf of Agnieszka, she, uh, submit this application at the end of July, and she was in communication with the clerk.
Name and address, correct your name and address?
Manuela Misiac, twenty-seven Dexter Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you do not own Elm Street?
No, but because the owner was in communication with the clerk, not to reschedule that, uh, assign someone to show up, just to present the, uh, the case, and I just would like to, um, so, so she applied for this short term, term permit, short, short, uh, term rental permit, um, July twenty-eighth, and, um, for this case, this is, the, the, the property, uh, has two driveways, and one is very wide to park a few cars, so if necessary, uh, short-term renters, there is park spaces available, which is important.
She's looking to rent one bedroom?
Yes, so it's, uh, it's her apartment when she's, uh, not in the.
She has a one-bedroom apartment?
No, she's two-bedroom, but just one bedroom for the short-term rental purpose. But, you know, eventually, if some person will come by car, uh, that there is a parking available, and, um, and what else? Uh-huh, there, there is this, there is also information in, in terms of that, that the building, there are, uh, there are motion sensor lights installed, and motion detector cameras, uh, all around the building, four of them.
Uh, she filled out all the paperwork, but I read something about the husband is on the deed and he's dead?
The husband died.
And, and she, she didn't have that changed yet?
Are you one?
Joint tenants.
Joint tenants, you want to?
Why, why?
The legal aspect of the deed.
No, I'm just wondering why they wouldn't.
Very interesting.
If it's joint tenants, then.
My mother, my mother, he's still on my mother's deed.
True.
Yeah.
Wow. You're just recording the death certificate, would.
Would, yeah, would.
If it's joint tenants, it would be survival, I'm assuming it is. There's one on white fourteen, like that.
Uh-oh. Hundred and seventy-five dollar filing fee?
Maybe, yeah, that takes away.
One oh nine, one oh nine seventy-five for the.
One hundred and seventy-five, wow. Uh, any questions? So, I'm, are you the owner?
Um, no, I'm not the owner, I'm Carolina Marek, uh, six Saint Margaret Street, Boston, Massachusetts, I am, um, Agnieszka friend for a long time, and I support her application, I run short-term, um, rentals at my house for a long time, and I am super house since two thousand eighteen, and I will help her if there's anything she needs, and, um, she has a good maintenance, uh, service, uh, I can help her with the cleaning service, so everything will be, uh, fine.
So, you're, you're the friend from Boston?
Yes, I am friend from Boston, and.
Thank you.
So you, she owns the house?
She owns the house.
Is there, it's a multifamily, correct, or is it?
Two-family, yes.
It's a two-family, you rent the other unit, right?
Uh, yes, her apartment, she locked her bedroom, and the other bedroom she, uh, can rented.
Yeah, so, but the, the other unit is rented?
Yes.
To the lawn.
Regular, uh, lease.
Regular rent?
Yeah.
And they utilize parking?
Yes.
Okay.
It's two driveways, so there's an extra space.
Yeah, yeah, no.
The women don't have a car.
I understand.
Uh, my, my.
Has she used the property as a short-term rental current, no?
Not yet, not yet.
Okay.
That's going to be her exchange, her first obligation, for some.
And I've seen, under this here, not to, not to even, you know, the way her electric bill, she gets a break on because of, uh, circumstances, uh, so I, I can see money's tight for her right now.
Yes.
And that's what this is all about.
But she's been responsible person, she's a good person, and she's making, she's taking care of the house very well, and I will help.
And when does she go visit all the time, where around?
Uh, she's coming for a whole summer, uh, usually, sometimes in, uh, she was actually, uh, back in February, uh, so she's.
So she leaves like six months a year?
No, no, that's, uh, she basically have the parents that she, uh, old, old age, not really, not very old, but I mean, it, so sometimes she just need to be away, and that's why she saw the opportunity in terms to, to get, not to keep, because she doesn't have the intention to rent entire apartment, which she usually.
Saying that she's not going to be here for six months at a time, who's going to do a rental slot?
I mean, obvious as a host, she have to access the application, so she's, uh, applying, using the communication.
No, no, Rob will take care of that, Mr. Con, Mr. Con does a great job, makes sure all that stuff's done right.
So this is online, and I will be.
I was just wondering what she was.
No, no, that's okay.
Absolutely, she's in charge.
That's fine.
You can have a seat.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call? I got a letter here, who, who closed that part, they gave a letter, it's a DPW, we reviewed the above reference project, we have no comments. Is there anyone opposed on the side? Step forward, say your name and address to record, please.
Hi, Mark Kennedy, twenty-one Baxter Street.
Wait, wait, one minute, we'll get, go ahead.
Mark Kennedy, twenty-one Baxter Street.
Okay.
So our concern is that it's going to be a multi-rental. Um, at one forty-one Elm Street, all of a sudden, it was a two-family, now it's a rooming house, okay, which we would never notify of.
Yeah.
And now all of a sudden, we got cars from New York, New Jersey, pop all over the place, Ohio, every week, it's somebody new. So we were just concerned, this might happen again, because we also have, um, the two rooming houses on Elm Street, then it's their property, then the next to that is, I believe, Then the next to that is, I believe, the courthouse has a property that they do, and we listen to them constantly out there playing, um, cornhole. All summer long, he had the kids. So that's what was our concern.
Right, right.
Is, uh, did you let anybody know about the potential that it might be a rooming house?
Did I let?
Have you called anybody in the city, in the special services, or the councilor, or anybody?
I've spoken to the council.
Okay.
Yes.
We, we'll relay the message as well, I'm sure we can check it out. So what property is that, that?
That was one forty-one Elm Street. And it happened last year. All of a sudden, it just, the guy was renovating it, and then all of a sudden, he's gone, and now it's...
So the good news is about any Airbnb use or short-term rental is, is, I think the city's done a decent job in trying to figure out how we can regulate these and like, actually regulate these. Instead of, instead of just, you know, letting people kind of run rampant like they seem like they are there. So that's part of this process. So it's nice that somebody actually did this upfront, which I will say, because we have a lot of people that, we catch them, and then we have to have them come.
So we didn't know what the intent was.
Yeah.
When she's saying it's a one, one-bedroom, one apartment.
That one apartment, they have two bedrooms.
And we require them to be kind of on-premise, too. So like, the only one to allow one typically would be like, if she wanted to just live in one unit and do short-term rental for the full other unit, we'd allow that. And same thing with this, like, we, it has to continue to be owned and occupied. So they can be well-maintained, so I'm not...
Baxter Street was mostly like that, all side-by-sides, and it was all families.
Yeah, so I'm, and I, and I don't know, I'm not trying to tell you something you may or may not know. I just wanted to like, put your mind at ease about, you know, specifically their application. You know, I can certainly understand your concerns about somebody else's, but I, I truly appreciate when people actually do the right thing up front. You know, like, that, that shows goodwill and, like, somebody's intent. And then once they're on the radar, these guys inspect, they fix it all up.
And they go watch the building.
So if we do approve this today, you know, make sure, like, if you see something out of line with this one, like, make sure you just shoot a note, like, and, and if you're not getting the response you deserve, then make sure you shoot a note to your councilor. If you're not getting your response you deserve from them, make sure you shoot a note to the mayor or to us, like, because that's what we're here for. So I just, I, you know, I, I certainly can appreciate your concerns, but I, I do, I do like the fact that somebody's doing it upfront, you know, so...
Oh, I, I, that's awesome if they're doing like that. It's also now the parking issues.
Yeah, you know.
She has the parking.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other one does not.
Right.
And hence why, hence why let's make sure we put it on their radar and let's figure out what's going on.
Well, thank you for your time.
I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you sticking around. And I'm not trying to diminish you, I don't feel that way.
One forty-one Elm, take a look at that.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get, uh, one forty-one on the radar. If you continue to see issues, please make sure to reach out to the, to the inspectional services.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Khan, direct, he's the one that's going to look.
The guy cowering at the back of the...
Second call, third call, all that part of the hearing closed. All right, uh...
I feel about the house, I was, I was impressed with the maintenance of the house. I feel like, I feel like it's a financial situation. I feel like you're trying to do the right thing, and I appreciate somebody doing it.
I do, too. I do, too. Uh, I'll be voting in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm characteristically in favor.
Whoa!